Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Calling meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And if everybody could please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there is no need for an executive session at this point in the meeting. Correspondents, you all should have seen a letter from the music department in your packet. Policies for first reading, there are none. Policies for second reading, there are none. That brings us to the first opportunity for comments from the public. There will be two. There is a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. The Board of Education has heard that public expression on school-related matters, of the comments that deal with personnel matters and or discipline issues that reveal the identity of specific individuals, either directly or indirectly, will be prohibited. As stated in Whitney Point Central School District Policy 3230, public complaints, questions of a specific nature should be directed to the appropriate office during school hours. The meeting chairperson has the right to limit and/or extend any and all discussions. His or her decision will be final. Please state your name and residency before you begin and keep your comments brief so all members of the community may have an opportunity to speak. And comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anybody who would like to speak this evening?
Good evening. Linda Burkhart, lifetime resident of the district. I know that right now we are in a this reprieve where they very begrudgingly took masks off the school kids, among other things. And I guess I just want to make sure that you understand that this is not the end of what faces or could possibly face our school, our district, the kids, teachers, parents, et cetera. The big concern is that Governor Hochul has used the administrative executive branch of the state government through the SAPA process to ensure that should she deem an emergency exist, or if the Health Department or the State Education determines that kids should be remasked, quarantined, tested, everything that had happened before is now been put through a process where it is now a rule through the Department of Health. And they're either due or have become permanent already. I don't know if any of you have researched it or not, or looked into it, or just gone by what I've been telling you. But you need to have a plan. And I think it's time that people deserve to hear a plan. And I don't want to hear about speculation. I don't want to hear about you can't, you know, decide this because you don't know what's going to happen. You have to have a plan because this could very well happen. And for me personally, I had to read a lot on good leadership, good stewardship, the whole nine yards. For me, an effective leader or group of leaders are proactive. Ineffective leader or leaders are reactive. We can't be reactive anymore. And I think a huge question that each and every one of you need to ask yourself, and I asked someone this, and I did not get an answer. Do you think at this point that we've been lied to? Okay, things that we have been told have not been true. I'm sure you're aware that in a number of school districts and in pediatrician's office, any child that has received the vaccine, the COVID vaccine, will not be cleared for a sports physical unless they've undergone heart blood tests or any KG. Why? Never been a requirement that I know of before. So there's something going on. And I think that we, everything will follow the science. Science has always been an area that we have to question. You have to question everything. I mean, if we didn't question old science, where would we be today? So I think that it's time that we start to work together. And I think we deserve some transparency because I don't, I don't think there's any transparency. We really haven't gotten answers to a lot of our questions. And I think that because of the things that have been put into place at the state level, forget federal and whatnot, that we are not done with this mess. There's still too many question marks, and I think that we need to be prepared and have a plan and look at all of the possibilities.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? There will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. I was waiting for Stacy to turn me off so that it didn't conflict.
Okay, that brings us to commendations. Okay, Whitney Point High School senior Bowen Tillotson. Congratulations for winning the Section 4 Division 2 Indoor Track and Field Championships. In the shot put on Saturday, February 19th, 2022, Bowen threw his personal best of 40 feet, 6.5 inches. Whitney Point High School senior Reese Abrahamson for receiving the Axar All-Star Award. Senator Axar recognized Reese for her display of exceptional character, leadership, and work ethic academically, athletically, and musically and socially. Whitney Point High School seniors Lane Tiderenzel and Alex Smith for being selected to play in the IAC Exceptional Senior Basketball Game at Odessa Montour on March 8th, 2022. Lane is also an Interscholastic Athletic Conference 21-22 Second Team Division All-Star. Also, Whitney Point High School sophomore Owen Stanish-Warpus, who is Interscholastic Athlete Conference 2021-2022 First Team Division Boys Basketball All-Star. And Whitney Point seniors Jane Austenfeld, Reese Abrahamson, Emma Morgan, Casey St. John, and Kylie Livingston for competing in the IAC Exceptional Senior Basketball Game at Odessa Montour on March 8th, 2022. And last but not least, Whitney Point High School alumna Christopher Hand for his induction into the Section 4 Wrestling Hall of Fame.
Okay, old business, there is none. That brings us to the 2022-2023 budget presentation.
Okay, so you know, this is our second meeting into our budget development series of discussions, and we're going to focus tonight on the tax levy limit calculation and just give you a little bit of a budget update. If we, what we're going to do first off is we're going to look at some comparative data. We're going to look at the composition of school taxes in our region just to give you some perspective and context on where we stand compared to other districts in our area. So if you look here, these are all the districts in our Bozies. You can see, everybody knows what their own personal tax rate is, but sometimes it's hard to understand how that compares to other districts and how that's configured. So if you look here in the first column and you look at all of the districts, you can see that for this school year, the tax rate, which is the tax rate per $1,000 of property value is listed right there. And you can see from the highest to the lowest, those are the districts. If you look in the next column, school taxes based on $100,000 of market value. So if your house is worth $100,000 in each of these districts, this is the amount of school taxes that you would pay. And then if you look at budgets in these different districts, we know, we talked about in our last meeting, how school funding is a complicated formula, and some funds come from the local level, but there's a process where tax dollars go through the state, and the idea is to make sure children in whatever district they live in, no matter what the local wealth is in that area, have an equitable educational experience. So money is distributed across the state to school districts based on what their local wealth is so that they can provide, you know, an excellent education for students, no matter where they live in New York. So it's very different from district to district. You can see here, this is the percentage of local tax dollars that fund, that are part of the whole budget. So if you look, and you live in Vestal, if you live in Vestal, 58.57% of the budget is funded by local dollars. And if you look down the same way, it's in order right there. If you go down a little lower in Susquehanna Valley, 44.13% of their budget is funded by local dollars. And you come down to Whitney Point, 22.46% of our budget is funded by our local dollars. And again, the idea behind that is, if so, if you're in an area like Vestal or Shenanger Valley, where there's a lot, there's industry there, there's more of a tax base, they can fund more locally. And the idea is that because funds come through the state, that they want to make sure that students in smaller towns, where there is not as big of a tax base, also get the same educational opportunity as kids who live in those other communities. So that's the reason that it's structured in this way. And then just as a reminder to you that when we're looking at our budget every single year, we're focused on these different areas. We want to maintain a focus on education. Obviously, we have to be really careful with dollars. We need to have a sustainable budget so that there's not fluctuations from year to year that impact the taxpayers. And then always, always think about a reasonable tax levy within the applicable regulations. We obviously have to follow rules and regulations, and we also are bound to do the best that we can to provide the best educational opportunity to our students. But we're also bound to make sure that we're responsible to the taxpayers in our community. So Mr. Woodard is going to explain.
All right, thank you, Joanne. So what we have here is the actual tax levy limit calculation formula. And what this was, was something initiated back in 2011 by the governor in his effort to try to control really escalating property taxes. And I think we all know over the last few years, there's been numerous tax rebates and STAR reimbursement programs to try to ease the burden, you know, keep the residents in New York State. So again, part of that initiative back in 2011, this perception of let's try to cap property taxes, school taxes at 2%. I think over the years, we know 2% does not mean 2%, but it's a part of this formula. And what we'll try to do is go through it and show you what our formula would be for this year. So when we apply that formula to the Whitney Point actual numbers, you can kind of see where we start plugging in the information. And interestingly enough, this year, you can see where that 2% actually comes into the tax cap formula. And that is the cap where you see around the middle of that slide, it's a levy, allowable levy growth factor. That's the number that's capped at 2%. And that, this year, is 2%. It's tied really in with inflation. So even though we all know our inflation number is way higher than 2% in its past 12 months, that is capped at 2%. And previously, we weren't even close to that in prior formulas. So you can kind of see, really, the formula is working the way it should to try to cap how much a school can go out for to increase their tax base. So going through these numbers, again, basically at the end, we spit out Whitney Point's tax cap for this current budget year is 1.78%. So what does that number mean? That number is what the state formula is saying Whitney Point can go out for, for a tax levy increase with a simple majority vote. If, for whatever reason, through the budget process, we needed more than that, we would then need to get a supermajority vote of 60% or more of the voting population. So here we have our number of 1.78. Again, that number is really derived by this formula. Well, what does that mean for other districts in our region? So that's where, again, kind of piggybacking off Joanne's first few slides, you got to put in context and really look at our region where everyone else's number falls in. So, you know, this year it works out, we're right in the middle of the pack. That's probably a good place to be. You got those outliers. There's one that's real low, .28. They probably had some, you know, capital portion of their formula fell off. That's why it made it go lower. You have other districts, I think the 3.15 is Windsor this year, where they had other things going on that raised their tax levy formula to beyond that 2%. So again, all those factors taken into consideration, Whitney Point were in the middle of the pack. Just kind of show you where some of our districts fall in our region. Five are within the 1% to 2% range, and seven are within the 2% to 3% range. Again, what that number means is, if you go out at your cap or less, you just need a simple majority in order to increase your tax base. So here is again, a very good comparative historical picture of where our budget has been over the last several years. And it's interesting, every year when we update this slide, you know, a year of data falls off. I'd love to make this slide, you know, as long as we could, because I think it does kind of show a picture. When we were doing this back in 2016-17, we still had the Great Gap Elimination and the Freeze Foundation Aid, where you saw a really different kind of picture. And you can kind of, I'll try to walk you through a little bit. But um, you look to the right corner, this is our projection for this upcoming budget cycle. It goes very close to what we last presented back in February to you guys. We show, you know, the history of the budget over those last several years. You can see the average increases around 2%. Last year, again, prior to a lot of this COVID stimulus relief bunny, a lot of financial uncertainty across the world, we weren't expecting anything as far as foundation aid, and we were honestly in a way different position than we are today. So that's where you can see that budget to budget increase last year was the lowest minimal 0.12%. You can look at it, you know, it's around $50,000 increase budget to budget. We did have a lot of things that weren't included. We were able to add back some. Again, how things played out, which was great. So again, kind of going through, following that right column of what we're looking at for this year. At this point in the game, again, we are in a good place. Foundation aid and initial proposal, it's up 5.62%. For us, a district that is over 7% reliant on state aid, that's everything you could ask for and hope for and advocate for. You can see, final numbers for that foundation aid, they're nowhere close to that 5.62%. So that helps out tremendously, this budget cycle. We're very happy and thankful for it. That's not final. But again, typically, once that initial number is released, in my experience, I've not seen it ever go down from there, so it's a good sign. Again, trying to just keep it all in one slide for simplicity, we grouped a lot of other items together, other state aid, and pretty consistent. That's all the reimbursable stuff, building aid, the Bozies, Bozies state aid, categorical things like that. Other revenue, again, consistent, which is, you know, we'd like to increase it, but really, we're pretty limited in how we can go about raising money. The little bit we do have in there, again, it's rental of a part of our bus garage for maintenance services. Could be interest income, admissions, foster buildings of other districts for kids we take care about, take care of, sales, you know, buses, annual auctions, things like that. Appropriative fund balance, again, that's kind of where I said, we really don't show the whole picture here, because 10 years ago, appropriated fund balance was about 1.2. I think we've been very proud to keep that at that $500,000 level. Again, what that's doing is really saying our unassigned fund balance, our savings account, we're going to allocate $500,000 of that to help meet the budget for next year. So as we've been able to sustain that and keep that there, again, it's pretty prudent financial planning. Same thing with the budget use of reserves, back 10 years ago, number was way higher. I believe we were around 700, 800,000. You can kind of see where that fluctuates year to year. And sometimes that's what's used to plug the budget gap. Also depends on circumstances, you know, ERS rates, TRS rates, stock market performance, things like that. The years that the stock market goes down, our contribution for employee pension benefits goes up. So right now, we're in a pretty good place. We're estimating funding about half of our employee retirement system bill at this point with the $200,000. You can see just a couple of years ago, you know, that number did go up. Again, really to balance the budget, we paid a few things that normally we would have tried to not pay with our funded reserves, but we did, and we were able to reduce that last year, which is good. And then again, a little historical, I guess, painting of the tax levy over the last several years. You know, I'm proud to say, you know, an average increase over that time was about 1.77%. Ironically, that's pretty close to our cap limit is this year, just a coincidence, I'm sure. But you can kind of see over the last few years of where that number is. And again, this misconception that 2% is 2%. I would say that 15, 16 was 2, but you can kind of follow it. Goes lower, 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 a couple of years, 1920, 2021, we're higher than 2. So last year, we did go out at our limit for that formula, 1.21. So I guess this is kind of leaning into where do we want to go from here? And honestly, with that foundation aid that was already released and going through our estimated expenditures and other revenue, that gap figure of $95,000 at this point is, it's a very good thing. And what I mean by that is, last year, when we did this presentation, this time the budget cycle, that number was $1.7 million. So it just kind of shows you the difference one year makes. And again, I think that's a very reasonable, doable number to, at this point, trim down in that budget, one way or another. So in theory, I guess I'm kind of saying, we would feel pretty comfortable keeping that tax levy flat this year, if we need to.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just liked this slide. I have to put it back in. I just think graphics sometimes are nice, and we think about, again, the fact that it is really, really essential that students are not dependent. Just, I mean, it sounds nice to be dependent on local tax dollars, and you have autonomy in a way, and then you feel like you have more control of your district. But if you look at that percentage of our budget, 22.46%, I mean, out of 38 million, 39 million is like, you know, a pretty small amount of money. And we, in that way, are thankful that there's an aid structure in place that makes sure that smaller districts can offer the educational opportunity that our students deserve. It helps our community, and certainly, of course, helps our students. It helps actually, you know, the tax values and the property values of the community. If your school district is, you know, has good facilities and is in good shape. So some ways, it's not great to be dependent on state aid because you also are dependent, and I don't know what's going to happen from year to year. But we are thankful that they look to make us, you know, on an even playing field. And then our students can go out into the world and feel like they've had a solid education, and it doesn't matter that they're from a smaller town. So bridging the gap, as Zachary just explained, we do right now have this $95,000-ish gap based on what we know about what the budget numbers will be coming from the state. So what do we do about that? There's different ways to approach it. We certainly look to reduce expenditures. We look very carefully at the money that we're planning on spending. We look at how can we utilize additional fund balance. We look to increase other revenue sources. Obviously, we're always doing that. You could potentially, in some years, increase the tax levy or any combination of the above. Those are all the tools that we have at our disposal to figure out how to make the budget even. The governor's final budget, as it says in the bottom here, as a little note, is still unknown. The timing of the way this happens from year to year is kind of unbelievable that, you know, they, you know, we're held to a date when we have to have our budget ready, and we have a vote on it, but the state isn't always on time with their final numbers. But as Zachary just noted, pretty much once those numbers are released, at least in recent history, there haven't been significant changes afterwards. So what's next? Look, we're going to look for additional efficiencies and/or reductions by reviewing all expenditure lines. We will certainly, we always do this every year, scrutinize all our Bozies expenditures, although you always have to think about, we get, then we don't get as much aid back when you cut some of the things that we do through Bozies. We have to wait, obviously, for the governor's actual budget run, late March, early April, and continue meetings with the Bozies CBO Financial Analysis Team. They work with us, consult with us, give us advice. They tend to have their finger on the pulse of what's happening in Albany to make sure that we're in the loop on all of that so that we can plan well. That's them. Thank you.
Does anybody on the board have a question? I have one quick question. I think it might be Senator Zach. I just read recently, and I think it's under the federal, that, and I think Whitney Point's not going to be affected. That student lunches, raised lunch for COVID, were all in that package. They've been moved. So I think we were already taking care of our students before that. So I just want to confirm that that's still what we're doing at Whitney Point, and.
Yeah, that's a, I'm very kind. We just had a meeting about that a few days ago. Whitney Point, prior to COVID, we were already offered provision to free breakfast for everyone in after-school tracks. Again, during the COVID pandemic, we were allowed to offer free lunch and that extended into this school year. Somehow, again, when we caught wind of that, that was removed, which I think we all find pretty ridiculous, how you not feed kids if you already started it. We had a meeting with the Bozies Food Service, who was in charge of a lot of that world. They ran updated numbers of hours, and they think we make qualify for a different program to where we could extend that permanently. I think that's something obviously we really want to do. So we're in the process of reviewing those numbers and figuring out what kind of applications we will apply.
And that would be lunch and breakfast both, if I'm correct. Thank you. I was a little concerned when I saw that.
Yeah, I think we all were.
So I have a quick question. When you're looking at the income that we have, the revenue, it goes down every year. Is there a reason for the trend?
The other revenue, or? Yeah, it's a reason, not particularly. I think in the last two years, we had really positive performance in our health insurance consortium. So if you do that, they would distribute a surplus, basically, your portion of your good experience. We did not get one last year, so that alone was like $150,000 rebate. We basically got that off. We could easily get that again, depending on experience in a few years from now. But miscellaneous things like that pop up all the time. There's been auditions, rather than, but that's a huge revenue generator per se. But we also build other districts for kids that maybe resided in, outside of our district at the time of foster placement. And then they move into, say, a foster home in our district, the Educate Down. And those fluctuate and move almost daily, unfortunately. So anyone that were educated in district at Whitney Point, we can then build that district of origin, like a Binghamton or whatever, and even then, those numbers could fluctuate year to year. We try to do a good job of capturing all that. But is there any one reason why it looks like a downward trend? Nothing specific to state that.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion, please. Thank you, Brian. And a second, thank you, Chris. And a second, thank you, Chris. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, approve the appointment of Brittany Plain, full-time teacher's aid effective March 16th, 2022. May have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And the second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? This is to replace Kelly Plaiment's, um, position to resign from. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve of the 2022 to 2023 instructional calendar. May have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Chris. Oh, any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Resolution for authorization to join group bid. Participate in the cooperative bidding for the following bids with other school districts in New York State. Grocery, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Paper products, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Meat, cheese and dairy, it's three times the per school year. Um, so July 1st, 2022 to October 31st, 2022. November 1st, 2022 to February 28th, 2023. March 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2023. Processing of USDA commodities net off invoice, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Milk and milk products, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Ice cream products, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Bread and bread products, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Smart snack bit, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Small wares, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Geographical fruit and vegetable, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Breakfast bag meals, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Chicken products, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Chemical bid is a three-year bid, so it's July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Be it further resolved that Andrea Hodak. Director of Food Services from Tyoga Bosse's or designate be designated to receive and open said bids. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Reserves the right to accept or reject any and all bids. May have a motion? I have Brian and Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? IPA Technology Equipment Resolution. Whereas the Instructional Technology Services Budget, A557, requires additional technology equipment to the currently available equipment. Whereas the Whitney Point Central School District wishes to spread the cost over five years with a multi-year installment purchase. The Brim Tyoga Bosse's is hereby authorized to. Expend annually on behalf of the Whitney Point Central School District in conjunction with the IT service funds to acquire IT equipment. Whereas the total cost, including estimated financing costs, will not exceed $154,416.20. May have a motion? So I have Danette and Brian. Any questions or comments?
Uh, just a quick one, um, against the annual, uh, equipment replacement resolution. Uh, we do these every year, uh, we borrow for this money over five years and we try to keep. The old IPA that's coming off the books, we try to again, get it smoothed in, so we never really have a drop in that. Cost, we run it through Bosse's, we can get Bosse's aid back on it. Um, but I think this particular IPA, uh, had around 190, uh, computer devices being replaced.
Can I ask that, uh, where are they headed? Are they, uh, student, teacher, where, where are these headed? It was a combination of both.
Basically, um, we, we work with Jamie Payne, who's our Midst Director here at Onsite. He has a very good detailed replacement schedule. Um, he identifies things, um, that are coming up in. Uh, past warranty, he identifies things that need to be replaced this year or next. Um, we meet and review that schedule once or twice a year, um, but he's really done a great job of, again, keeping track of that revolving inventory and adding. Again, when, you know, one to one, it, it added a lot more to that. Um, or again, kind of build in sustainability is to really try to keep that cost the same year to year.
I was kind of curious because I saw that there's a lot of Dell computers, that's why I didn't know where they were going with student focus. Because I know most of the students are using Chromebooks. Um, and I didn't see any Chromebook sort of replacement going on here. Was that going someplace else?
I don't think there's any Chromebooks yet.
But the, the Dell's, there's, so there are Dells that the teachers use, but there's also Dells in some classroom setting. So, you know, as you've mentioned in the past, that some, there's some courses that really need to have. Where, and yeah, so they, so we've got, uh, class sets in different locations in the, in the district for that, for this is they use those.
So how is the Chromebooks doing? I know Jamie does all this, but I'm kind of curious as to.
We damage wise?
Yeah, are we seeing like?
Well, that's actually a good point. We did, um, through one of our, uh, grant, uh, awards, we built in. Replacement, I believe it was third Chromebooks that were damaged the past year or two. Um, so that was just again, an opportunity where, uh, as part, I believe of the project where we got the wifi. The buses, the smart wifi, we built in, uh, again, the replacement of those Chromebooks. So we're always looking at different avenues, try to maintain that. Um, so again, that was really how that worked for things out of that normal replacement.
Like jinxed it, but like we had a little spike in damage, but then it seemed to have, um, eased about and things have been holding pretty steady.
I'm not seeing the replacement cost that I'm seeing in other districts right now. That's why I'm sort of asking that because. Some of the other districts are suffering a lot right now, so that one. Because I look at, I look at a lot of IT plans for other districts, so I was just curious where, where we're at with that, so.
Well, in some districts, actually, we're one to one before us, so some of their devices are older.
Right.
And we, and are, they're pretty new, so, yeah, we are, so, yes.
Is purely this category of current replacement? Is there a separate category for improvements? Is that what this, is this a true replacement or?
Yeah, I mean, obviously we're upgrading any of those older devices with the current.
But for expansions, that's separate, um, why not, or separate budget?
I think sometimes if we come to you guys with a IPA and it's not replacing one, we would tell you that this is a brand new initiative. Um, for the one-to-one or, or something like that, but this IPA on, on the agenda, it's strictly a replacement. With all, uh, the newer devices.
I think I'm like Brian right now, I'm looking at what's happening in China, I'm just like, let's make sure we have what we need.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the 2021 Office of the State Comptroller Fiscal Stress Monitoring Report. The Whitney Point Central School District received a score of 13.34, which corresponds to the no designation stress level. Which was good news. Be resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Prove the following credit card for the 2021 to 2022 school year. The name is under the Whitney Point Central School District. It's issued by Elon Financial Services under MBT Bank. And the credit line is $5,000. May have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second?
One second.
Thank you, Danette. Any questions or comments?
Every year through your meeting, uh, the board approves the annual credit cards, uh, for the district. Uh, the current school credit card is through Chase and it's under Pat Phallett's, uh, name. And that's proven very, very difficult to change. Um, so we have been trying to do that the last several months. They got to the point where we realized we just need to open up a new one. Um, that's why the next resolution, you'll see, we're not going to try to just have one name on the card. So we actually got two cards, one in Gilman's name and one in my name, just for anything that might happen.
Obviously, we only use credit card when the, the only thing they'll take, you know, sometimes there is.
Hotel, hotels.
Doesn't mean Zach will be close to the one that.
Yeah, we have a few things around like automatic, like our fingerprinting processing fees are automatic on the Chase card, so. We want to get everything switched over, but once we're sure that's all done, then we'll definitely close up.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Be resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Prove the following individuals as authorized cardholders of the Elon Financial Services MBT Bank Credit Card. For the 2021 to 2022 school year. Joanne Sexton, Superintendent of Schools, Zachary Woodard, School Business Executive. May have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Chris. Any questions?
Just have a comment, thank you. Because I just went through a horrible situation at the college because somebody had taken time to do something like this. So I appreciate that.
I appreciate you recognizing it.
Oh, it is, it is, yes, thank you.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Be resolved of the Whitney Point Central School District, Board of Education does and hereby authorizes a capital project. The expansion of pre-kindergarten education space with an estimated cost of $1,427,979. Funded by the American Rescue Plan, ARP Act, and $556,305. Funded by the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations, CRSA Act. For a total project of $1,984,284. May have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or?
So, I'll start by saying, I mean, you may remember that, um, right from the beginning when we put the initial PK. It was supposed to be a two addition and then another two additions, so that eventually we would have all four-year-olds up here. And in our last project, um, we, the, the project that's going to start next year. We looked to include that second addition in that project, but then, you know, the way things, so it became too expensive, we couldn't do that. We wanted to make sure there was no tax impact on that previous budget. And then we were advised that you can use some of this recovery money, a portion of it. To have some kind of long-term investment, because the recovery money is temporary. And obviously we're going to, you know, you're using it for intervention services and things in a, in a way that we know that the money's going to disappear in a period of time. But by taking this po- pocket of money and setting it aside, then we'll have a long-term investment in. Early intervention in our district and making sure that we can have a seamless, uh, you know. Consistent, uh, program for four-year-olds. And we have had the greatest partners for the RPK program, we are so thankful. But there are some challenges with having some four-year-olds in one place and some four-year-olds in other places. Um, so, uh, we'll, we're glad that we're able to do this with part of this money.
Just to piggyback off of that, uh, we floated this idea back in October, uh, to you guys. Um, I think we had, uh, decent support at that time. Uh, the reason you're seeing this resolution now. It took the state that long to approve our grant application for the UPK project in there. So we didn't really want to do anything further or again, even hold off on the architect agreement, even though they've already kind of been designing this. So I think you kind of, if you remember, the last time they came out, they had new images of what it looked like. This is where we could have exterior bathroom access to the fields, we're going to redo the playground out there. So, um, again, this is something we talked about, um, and now again, if we have the official state approval, this resolution is kind of formalized.
I just want to add that, um, I'm very glad that the, the district got ahead of a lot of this. And I know in a lot of other districts, they're not as far along or as well set up for UPK. I, I have to say, we're probably one of the best set up districts for UPK in the whole area, so. Uh, kudos to the district for looking at that and looking ahead, so I think that's a great, um, asset to our district.
Absolutely, I want to just whether, Tom, it's absolutely, I, I have to work for UPK all the time, you have done a great job.
I go in a lot of schools and it, and they might have one class. And, and we're, we have space and teaching, it, it's wonderful.
I know, obviously we've got those competitive grants, uh, and I'm so thankful that we were able to do that. And again, like I can't begin to tell you how wonderful our community partners have been. I mean, they, they've just done the best job in working with us to make sure that there's little difference, but there just still is, you know, sometimes, so. You know, there'll be three-year-olds at the offsite locations eventually when this project is done. Four-year-olds up here.
So we will still be partnering, partnering with those same organizations, just. Yes, we're just moving it so that all the fourth graders would be. A little bit of a difference here between four-year-olds and fourth graders, sorry. Um, but it just, it means that all the four-year-olds will be in one location.
I love the idea that sports have a bathroom.
That's a little bonus that got to slip in there. There's an outdoor bit, yeah.
Of course you became them.
I think that was also one of the plans too, back when we put the original edition on. Was that when we did the second edition, we would be able to include that space there so that there would be access. Um, without having the building completely open.
They mentioned that. Because of my age, I think about when you increase the footprint or your footprint. It also increased your expenses. And. I'm in favor of this, but I'm also in favor of educating everybody as we go along. We created something that's costing more money. Okay, it's not all going to come out of our 77% from the state. It's just that you have to keep in mind, and everybody's got to know what's the right thing to do, but it's going to cost. Right? It's going to cost the man that built me, keep it up, repair and so on and so forth, so.
And the teachers become part of our table.
That's all.
Yes, yeah.
What we have to think about as a district, that will be what we have to.
And we get those separately, so the costs for running those things, including custodial costs and things like that are, um, in grant lines now. And the, this building, this addition will be connected in that same hallway, so, you know. Kind of like the system, the heating systems and the water systems are, were originally designed to add that on, so that. Um, Bill, you know, it's, we're being as smart as possible about it. Uh, and like I said, we're fortunate enough to have gotten out ahead and gotten some of the competitive dollars that included a lot of those things. That support the program fully, so, uh, that's good.
Thank you.
Trying to get the most bang for our buck.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Be resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Prove the post-referendum agreement amendment for Ashley McGraw Architects for the 2021 Carly Adams UPK Capital Project Edition. May have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second?
I got Danette.
Any questions or comments? This just goes along as the project being official now with the state. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Brings us to Superintendent Updates.
So, um, a lot has happened and.
So a lot has happened in the world of COVID since our last meeting. We thankfully, the numbers of cases in our area have dropped dramatically, have dropped all over dramatically. That's wonderful. We do continue to have some, but the approach in general from all the agencies that oversee us has made a really significant shift. So we, there's much more emphasis on families and community just trying to stay healthy and stay in communication and work together to treat this more as any other infectious disease that you come to school when you are well, that you don't come to school when you're not well. They have given us tons of COVID kits. They try, you know, they are trying to communicate with families through the schools so that we have kits for families to use so that they can monitor student health. There's a move away from intensive contact tracing, which was just a very disruptive to the education of students and certainly to families' lives, to more just giving information and then letting families know if their child was near somebody, had an exposure, we're not calling it being in contact anymore, that we would give them that information and they would just be a little more vigilant in watching their students for symptoms and giving them testing resources if they need it. Obviously, many of the rules that we had in place before were all contingent on everybody being masked. So they made, you know, they made that announcement on a Sunday and we thought, holy cow, you're going to wait till Wednesday to lift this. But, you know, they say that part of the reason was they had to change all those regulations in time to give us new guidance on what we could do. And so we've gone from many, many have-tos and shoulds and musts in what we were given to best practices, recommendations, you know, guidance. So again, you know, it's not perfect. We're still having cases, but far less. We are in a much more normalized state of affairs in the schools as far as COVID is going. And we're just, again, you know, I don't want to be superstitious, but hopefully we're staying on that track because it's a much better situation. I just also wanted to note that we did send out a couple of surveys. I try not to bombard people with surveys and stagger them a little bit. But if you are in communication with people, to please know that we are looking for input on how to best meet student academic, social, emotional needs with some of these recovery funds. And then also, we are reviewing some policies. Policy committee, get ready because we just got the new whole book for recommendations for the updated policies. But the one that you know that we're working on first is the academic eligibility policy, getting input. I've had lots of great conversations with lots of our students who are really, really thoughtful and have lots of really some almost profound perspectives on what matters in school and what schools could be doing better. And then also about the academic eligibility policy. So that's been joyous. But we've now also put surveys out. I want to sort of wait for things to calm a little bit so maybe people can pay attention. So if you talk to people, say, pay attention to your email. There are, you know, there are surveys in there for both students and for families.
Joanne, did the social emotional ones last yet?
It went out to the community in the newsletter. That's, it's included in there. And then I just sent the academic eligibility. Let's family. So I'm going to send that one out now.
I saw the one from email electronic, right? So this is the social emotional ones that are out of electronic? Is it just going to?
It's getting around electronic also. There's, it's in that newsletter.
I saw it was on the newsletter. I just wondered if it was going to be electronic. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Please remember that the statements that were read prior to the first opportunity remain in place for the second. Is there anybody who would like to speak up at this time?
Good evening. My name is Eric Scully, resident of Whitney Point and a parent of a high schooler. First of all, let's say these people in this room, I wish it was about 100 more, being that you're talking about the budget this evening. Very critical thing for our district. For those of you that are here for that, thank you so much. This is my first time here. I missed all the action of prior meetings. This is calmer than I've seen on TV, which brings me back to last month's board meeting. There's a couple topics brought up during the business session concerning parents about the bus wifi. Their big concern was the kids are using it for not homework and that. My concern is, and I did a little research, correct me if I'm wrong, but the physical wifi devices on the buses are funded by state. Correct? That would be a correct statement. Okay. So there's no additional cost and stuff involved. The other question on that, with that service, excuse me, is there a subscription or type of program to get that signal to the buses? And if so, is that a granted funding or is that a wide expense for the school?
The data plan for one year was included with the grant.
Okay. And when did that plan take effect?
I have all the paperwork for it. It's member of the service.
We getting pretty close to the one year.
No, I just went via a month.
Okay, so it's still fairly fresh. Okay, great. This may seem a little minute, but it was an issue addressed last month with the confusion of the dumpster issues. One of the board members or school employees was going to look into any recourse with the Bosse's contract, where there was additional expenses that were incurred by the school because of the driver retired, I believe it was. Garbage piled up and had to take alternative methods, obviously. Did, is that person here that said they would look into it? I couldn't tell on the Zoom meeting. It wasn't.
That was me. I have not looked into it. Again, the additional expense was minimal. It's really not anything to look into.
Okay, so not a big dollar sign if they were.
Mainly, we had to throw away some recycles that we normally do not have.
All right, last but not least, I'll get right into it there. Talking on your coronavirus updates, is there a reactivation plan in place or in the works? If we do have to go back to the same, same situation we're in, that's a lot, is there something in the works?
It is something that we need to discuss that we've not had the opportunity to as of yet, but I'm sure that we will be looking at all aspects of that and go from there.
So definitely, I just is where information comes out. See what you can do to make the best both of us.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Well, good evening, everyone. Biggest thing I would like to understand is the process of addressing the community. A lot of the board meeting minutes indicate certain members speaking about their concerns. And I understand the Board of Education process is to submit that in writing. But when the community comes out on their free time, I think it's important to make sure those concerns are addressed and they're addressed timely. What is the process for the board?
In terms of responding to things that are brought up during comments from the public?
Right. I've looked at the last six months of meeting minutes, and I don't see anywhere there that those concerns have been addressed.
Sometimes they're addressed individually with the person who posed it. But we do try to respond when we're able to come up with an answer. There are some questions. We don't have definitive answers. We do let people know that. But there may not be a definitive answer at that time.
Understand. I really don't need the mic.
Well, I know that we all can hear you here, but.
Oh, hello. Yeah, no, I am a microphone expert. No, does it work?
I know, I know that we can hear you, but it's difficult for people who happen to be.
Check, check. Okay. All right. So let me just get back to your comment. So there's been a lot of excitement from the community regarding COVID. Linda brought it up this evening as well as Eric regarding a plan of being proactive. So I would expect something like that to be addressed fairly quickly, considering more than likely, something's probably going to happen with COVID again and to have that addressed. So final comment would be that even if you respond to the individuals privately, I think the community deserves to have an update in general of the outcome of that conversation.
Yes, that is.
Concern.
That is a case where we wouldn't just respond to the individual.
Okay.
That's why I said sometimes the response is to the individual.
Okay.
But like I said, the last six months, I went back and looked. I couldn't find a response to any of the really valid concerns that the community brought to the board's attention.
Regarding masks? Are you talking specifically or?
Yeah, it would be mask. It'd be regarding the wifi concerns of kids being able to get on other sites. An academic concern where I think, I'm trying to remember what parent brought it up. Of course, I don't have my documentation with me, but concerns about grades and if they can play sports or not. They have different requirements than other students, things like that.
That's, we did just address that. We have to go over the policy.
Okay.
And we, when it was brought up to our attention, that that policy needed to be reviewed. We did just get, we got the samples, correct, from?
So are we still having a conversation? Rules are very awkward about in board meetings. So I'm, but I'm just, so yes, the group of people that spoke about the academic eligibility policy, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Came together and met as an initial group and sort of came up with a game plan.
Okay.
With some members of the administration. And then one of the things, that's why I said we met with students to get their input and we sent out surveys. We put a sort of hiatus on that policy procedure for right now. And then we're going to have a formal review of our policy.
Wonderful. Okay.
So just a final comment in general, I've just, I've watched a lot of the videos online. I've also looked at the meeting minutes, as I mentioned, and I'll reiterate what Linda said. I think being part of this community, the community is amazing here. We're very supportive of our children academically, also sports-related, and I think it's just important to be transparent. And I think we're really missing that here. A lot of these meetings, we come, people voice their opinion, or their concerns. And I feel that the community doesn't get the responses they're looking for, or at least a response in general. And we need to get better at that.
In terms of the masks, yeah, one of the things that has tempered having any conversation about it is that we are required to follow the rules set down by the New York State Education Department. As wonderful as it would be if we could just say, you know, even at the last meeting, we're done with masks. You know, we couldn't. The state required us to do that. It has nothing to do with taking money, right? It doesn't have anything to do with our personal feelings about wearing masks or not. The State Education Department and the Health Department had these rules. We have to follow them legally. We don't have a choice. It's like, it's like, you know, you have to wear a seatbelt when you're driving your car.
Right.
If there had been anything we could have done, we would have. But we did state multiple times during meetings that we have to follow those rules.
Okay.
Were required to by law. We didn't have a choice. This is a case where there was no local choice for us to make a decision other than to do so. Okay.
And that's a fair statement. I appreciate that. I just think that it may not have been delivered across the community. So again, thank you for your time. I am running for the board member position. So I look forward to working with all of you. And thank you, community, for coming out and sharing your concerns. And I look forward to future meetings here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first I want to say thank you, just as a former coach and having had to thankfully not have to deal with the academic eligibility very often with my athletes. But what I'd like to point out is how quickly you picked up that gauntlet for the parents that came concerned about the academic eligibility. But the people that were concerned about the COVID restrictions were just put off. And I want to just respectfully disagree with some of the things that were stated. Okay, first of all, it was, they were rules. They were not laws. And kids, young kids were being told that it was against the law to not wear a mask in school. And that's simply not true. And we can go into all the legalities, which we will in a minute. But if you look at the document, if you look at the federal registry, the LEAs, the local education agencies were in charge. So unless there were strings attached that said that you had to follow the CDC or the State Department, you could have been in charge unless there were strings attached. And I know that, and that's where the money's coming from. So once again, we're going to have that question. If they change the rules, are we going to have this debate again? So again, we're looking down the road. Communication and transparency, tagging on what Tiana said. I've emailed all of you a number of times. Danette, you responded a couple of times. Thank you. Other than that.
I responded to.
You did about the study.
Thank you.
Yep. But other than that, I asked someone, which board seats were up, and I was referred to the clerk. No names. I mean, I just, I was asking for somebody else. I wasn't even asking for me. I just said, let me email and find out. Another thing about this whole following the rules of state act. Did any of you bother to check with Nassau County Schools? Anybody? What did you find out?
What I found out is that after the decision by the court was overturned in Albany, that they all had to go back to wearing masks at that point. I told.
Who'd you call?
Our student teachers had to. They had to. They were me.
Who'd you call? I called the Nassau County Executive's Office. And when I asked that question, they said about half of the schools in their county were mask optional. I called the day after the board meeting. So I don't know what to say. I tried to do my homework. It pretty much confirmed what I thought I knew.
If you'd like, I can find out who I called because I do not remember exactly who I spoke to. I went online. I looked up the school that had.
Well, school websites are not up to date. For instance, our school website says that we vote in school board elections by machine. I'm just stating a fact.
I looked up the information on who to call.
Okay.
I did not look up the.
Who you called. Okay.
So if you could please, when you fill the question, please allow me to finish my statement before making an assumption. And I'd be happy to let you know who it is I spoke to.
Sure.
I don't, it's all off the top of my head.
Yep. I guess that the communication, though, you know, I emailed. You got those emails up and I thanked you for that, but for the most part, not a lot of response. Like, we still don't know where you stand on a lot of things. And I think it bothers people. And then when it bothers people, they don't trust you. And when they don't trust you and there's all this conflicting information, then the whole respect thing goes down the tube too. And some people handle it different than other people. Clearly, there's been some bad behavior. But I think that. But I think that when people become frustrated, you know, it leads to other things, so. The one thing I want to point out is that there are some things that I think should be happening. I think we need to create a committee, whether it goes through your policy committee or whatever, to look at future policy. And it must contain both school and community members. And it needs to address specifically the federal money that you have taken and will be taking to see exactly, exactly what the wording is in all of those documents, because they're a pain to read, believe me. I've been printing them off and trying to and trying to sift through them. I think you also need to stop the highly discriminatory practice of forcing unvaccinated teachers to test weekly. There's no science behind this practice, none whatsoever. I I don't know how else to say it. It's clearly a civil rights violation. And yet you continue to do it. Is there a rule for that right now? Why?
Well, that's, you know, those are the answers that you want, that we can agree with.
But you're the local education agency. You're in charge. You are in charge.
But the state doesn't see it that way.
They don't have to see it that way. You have to see it that way. I know this puts you in a hard spot, but people have to stand up for other people whose rights are getting trampled. Look at other countries. China isn't a major lockdown right now. It's not over. And if it is over, they'll think of something else. I'm just telling you how I see it. Yep.
You have used your three minutes.
And so have other people.
May I, may I finish my statement?
You may.
I would appreciate it if you could finish the thought that you're on.
Okay.
Not cutting you off. I just.
Okay, here's a list of unconstitutional and illegal actions that have taken place. Violation of your oath of office, practicing medicine without a line, a license and providing no informed consent. That's a class one felony, sorry, just try to throw that in there. You have violated New York State Law Education 3002 and oath to support federal and state constitutions. New York Penal Law 260.10 endangering the welfare of a child. We already talked about the fear factor with the younger kids. New York State Constitution, Article 1 and 11, equal protection of laws, discrimination and civil rights prohibited. That's regarding the forced testing. There's other public health laws I could refer to, but the big one is there has been no informed consent. Kids were made to wear masks. Masks were not FDA approved. They were emergency use authorization only. It violates Geneva Code, it violates the Nuremberg Code and a bunch of other international documents as well. So I guess we want you to to stand with us. We want you to stand. This has been my message from day one. And between the lack of communication and the inability to to take a stand or even sit down and talk with people, it's just been very, very frustrating. Federal law violated children's rights. And there's been a breach of fiduciary duty. I have all this documented if you want it. Back to the FDA. The FDA doesn't test anything. Yep. Okay. I think people get my point, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Ken Jones. I'm a member of the music department here at Winnebago. I just wanted to, on behalf of music department, I just want to thank the board and the administration, all members of the administration for the support you've provided us in all of our endeavors. I wanted you to know that from guidance, every time we have questions, which we seem to have constant questions, and we really appreciate the guidance you support us. The way that you listen to our ideas openly and hear us instead of just listening. And as well as the financial support you've given to music activities, both the in-school ones and the extracurricular ones. I just want you to know that your your support is noticed and felt by the members of the department, and we truly appreciate that support. The proposal that the music department has provided is something that we have been working towards advocating for for multiple years now. We just like you to know that means a lot to us that you are taking the time today to read and consider the proposal. So thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? That brings us to Board of Education comments.
My name is Tom Tasper and I've been on the board for 13 years. I guess one of the things that keeps coming up and I just would like to make a comment on is during the public comment period, comment is a comment. It's not a discussion period. And this is why it might seem like we're elitist and we don't answer questions, because this is not the time for us to do that. Usually it's to let you know where to go to. As a board, we don't answer things here. Trust me, we hear it. So it just keeps being said, and I'm sorry if people don't understand that. Anybody that knows me in the community and the rest of us in the community, we're very approachable. You can talk to us, we'll do things, but up here, the way that we're decorum is set up, this is the way we do things and that's how we have to do it. I feel terrible that people feel snubbed. But that's not the time to do it. That's just what our responsibilities are here. As far as being open, I mentioned it the last board meeting, my daughter, who's now 24, when I came to a board, I couldn't, there wasn't anything. If you sat down, you had no idea, and I'm not kidding, you would not know what was being talked about, what was being voted on, nobody would answer anything you said, so for transparency, we have come a long way. It might not seem like it, but this is what we have to work with and this is how we work with it, and trust me. This is one of the reasons I got on the board is because I had no idea what was being done and I could never find out what was being done and nobody would talk to me unless I was sitting up here. You can go back and look at the record, nobody would know. So I apologize as a board member if we come off conceited, arrogant, uncaring. We're all members of this community, but we have to work within what is the decorum and what is set up for us to do here. It's not a question and answer period. It is a comment period and hopefully people will be commented to or addressed where to address their comments or questions, concerns. And usually it is not with us because we don't have control over those things. We control the superintendent as far, and I don't mean control, I'm sorry, Joanne. We hire and pick a superintendent. We look at policies and make policies. We do not answer the community and tell you what we can do here as a board, as individuals, we can do things, but as a board, we can't. Like I said, I I understand that. I just wanted to mention that because it's very confusing and I know it seems very upsetting that we sit up here and it's like, they don't care. They don't care. They don't care. It's a comment period. So I think I'm a little bit short of my three minutes, but I'm going to stop.
I am pretty sure I'm correct on this, but I just would like to confirm for those people concerned about the bus wifi. That bus wifi is held within the same BOSI's rules that the school wifi is. So all the safeguards that are in place for all students are still held within those confines. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we also, after the last meeting, contacted BOSI's for the particularly YouTube settings. And the problem is that, it's not a problem, I mean, the good thing is that YouTube is teaching tool. So, but there's also things that waste a lot of time on YouTube. Anything that's entirely inappropriate is blocked, but there's a gray area. And so we're trying to figure out how can we shut it down enough that we can still access the learning materials that you want to access, but not. So, you know, it's music though, like the music department would like to be able to access them. So how, you know, how you refine that in a way to use it in a good way, but you know, not contribute to kids wasting time.
Right, and the ad to law has become so overpowering that some students, I mean, some schools are just like, not even letting, you know, WebEx meetings for parents, which is an important process. I mean, there's a lot of parents that never were able to come to parent meetings. And now, even though COVID created a lot of virtual meetings, it has become a great tool for parents that needed to have that access. And I would hate to see that disappear. So I know that it's really a fine line that we're working with. So, and I I just would like to make a comment. There are times that because when I get emails from individuals, the Winnie Point email system, when a link is put into the email itself, it sees it as a risk of virus. And it stops us from looking at anything or answering or responding. It is very, very difficult. Most of the time, if there's a sentence or two, we can read it. Sometimes, you know, I I commented several individuals, but I had to actually trash many emails because I will not risk the devices being virus infiltrated, because I don't know always what's coming. So I just want to say that the system protects us that way. And so again, you might think that we're being ignoring people when we're not. It's because the system is protecting us.
My name is Dawn Ed Griffith. This is my first year. I'm still within my first year of being on the board and when we got the announcements that the masks were going to be lifted on a Sunday, I was thrilled as well. And I really wanted to give a shout out to Joanne for responding with emails to us as quickly as she could. We didn't have to wait to know what was going to happen and I really appreciated that. And if everyone can look around, no one's wearing a mask. Like, we're so happy to be able to be free and smile and see one another. I've, I've never seen Zach's face until today. So, so definitely it was, it was a great thing. So I really appreciate that. And and we do appreciate everything that everyone came and shared and the thoughts that they expressed. And we really do take it to heart and we're we're not allowed to talk back when you guys have comments, so it is really tough to sit here because a lot of us are not quiet people who just listen. So please keep that in mind. We do appreciate everything that you are sharing and thank you. And I was late. I do apologize. I don't know, did we talk, did, did you guys go over the music department's correspondence? Okay, well, thank you to our music department for everything you've done. It's been so great to see you guys back in action. Shows all county missmood preparations, everything that you do. I mean, so many of our children, I know everyone, mentioned sports and everyone mentions academics, that music is so important in the lives of our children and we appreciate you. And I, I think I see almost everyone in our music department here. And thank you so much for being here, for supporting us and and everything that you do, and we really appreciate it and thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to recess the public meeting and adjourn to executive session to hear discussion on contractual. It'll be 7:26 about when we recess. I do want to comment that any students who are in the audience who need to have their sheets signed, you can come to any one of us. It doesn't have to be a particular person. Any of us can do that for you. I'm sorry. Okay, so Chris is moving that we recessed the meeting. And we have a second.
A second.
Thank you, Danette. All those in favor. Any opposed, any abstained? And thank you very much, all of you for coming. We do appreciate hearing your input.